Welcome to the 2025 Harrisville City Council Candidate Debate proudly hosted by the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. This event is being recorded and technology permitting will be posted on social media to ensure those unable to attend can still view the discussion. My name is Derek Fisher and I have the privilege of serving as President of the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. Our organization represents officers and deputies from across Weber and Morton Counties. Named after the Weber River that flows through both counties, our lodge is dedicated to serving our members by providing support, organizing events, and acting as a representative voice with local administrative and city leaders. We are also deeply committed to fostering strong relationships with the communities we serve, whether through service projects, community events, or outreach initiatives. City council members play a critical role in managing budgets and resources that ensure our communities have essential public safety services. They work collaboratively with the mayor to chart the course that best meets the needs of their community. The Weber FOP invited all candidates for the Harrisville City Council to participate in the debate. We were happy to report that all were able to attend. The focus of tonight's debate is public safety, a matter that affects us all. Members of the public as well as our public safety professionals, including police, fire, and dispatch were invited to attend and submit questions. Important dates: The general election will be held Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Ballots will be mailed out approximately two weeks prior to the election. Questions were submitted via email prior to debate and those selected were chosen to be based on their relevance to the topic of public safety and community interests. Given time constraints, we may not be able to address all the questions during the debate. However, any questions that are not asked will be forwarded to the candidates for written responses which will be posted on our Facebook page. If time allows, after the prepared questions have been addressed, members of the audience will have the opportunity to ask the candidates additional questions. This portion will be facilitated by the moderator or me today. For our candidates, we have Stephen Hempel, Jason Hadley, Greg Montgomery, and Brenda Nelson. Introduction to the topic: Public safety has become an increasing and less desirable career across the nation for a variety of reasons. Among the most significant challenges are the extension of retirement eligibility to 25 years of service. Under a retirement plan that no longer competes with benefits offered in surrounding states. Within law enforcement, there also has been a cultural and policy shift. One that has introduced greater leniency for the offenders while simultaneously imposing stricter expectations and oversight on officers. Combined with growing sense of diminished recognition for critical work they perform, these factors have made it more difficult to attract and retain qualified men and women in the profession. Adding to these challenges, it is, challenges is a concerning trend to modern politics. Spice of rhetoric and smear campaigns, often aimed at gaining influence rather than building solutions, have created real consequences for both public and the professionals who serve it. First responders increasingly placed in volatile situations made worse by political narratives that unfairly label them through unfounded accusations of racism, extremism, or association with hateful groups. Such tactics erode trust, damage morale, and distract from the shared goal of safer communities. Despite these obstacles, Harrisville continues to stand out for its professionalism and dedication. The city has constantly produced, consistently produced officers and firefighters who serve with integrity commitment and pride, reflecting both the strength of this community and the leaders that supports them. The rules for the debate will be each candidate will be allotted a two-minute introduction and closing. When a question is asked, each candidate will have, will have two minutes to respond. If another candidate is addressed during the answer, that candidate has a one minute, one minute to respond if they'd like. Additional follow-up questions may be asked. We're gonna dig into it. We're gonna start with the introductions and we're just gonna start right here with you, Brenda.
Hi, I'm Brenda Nelson. I've been a Harrisville resident for 20 years. I'm also a real estate broker. And I run two businesses in Weber County. I'm excited to be running for this position as I'm very passionate about serving our communities. I love our town of Harrisville and I look forward to hopefully serving and just working towards our future and protecting our private property rights and moving forward with growth and smart growth, that is, and doing what we love every day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Montgomery. I have been a resident of Harrisville for 40 years. And my family has been in Weber County since 1851. So we do have roots tied to the county in many different, different ways. The reason I've run for city council, chose to run for city council is I feel there are many things I have to offer as talents and skills that I have gained over the last 40 years of employment. I've been retired for three years. And in that time of when I worked and the things I observe now, I see there are some things that are needed in the community. Especially about public input and public discussion on how things are solved and even how things are brought as information. And that's one of the reasons I chose to run for the city council office. I think I have some unique skills that can be of benefit to the community, both by living in the community for so long and knowing the area, but also understanding Harrisville has a very unique situation. We're one of the smallest communities in Weber County, both in landmass and then also in population. And those face challenges as we try to look at other communities around us and decide what can we do and what can't we do because of our size and economic base. And I think those become challenges that are, in one way looked at as impossible, but I think there are opportunities. And those are the things I wish to capitalize on as being a member of the city council. Thank you.
My name is Jason Hadley. I'm also running for city council. I've been a resident of Harrisville since 1999. My roots also go back a little bit of time. My, I have an aunt and uncle who currently live in Harrisville. And have lived there pretty much their entire lives tied with the Saunders family. That's a very strong family in Harrisville. But also, I didn't know this until after I had moved to Harrisville, that I actually live exactly two blocks away from the first house that my, my grandparents on my dad's side built. And so it's kind of neat to, to be where family is and, you know, the things that drew my wife and I to the community of Harrisville is the, is the people. I remember we drove to the house where we now live and when we were looking at that house, we drove there on a Sunday and just seeing the community out, being with each other, participating with each other. That's what attracted us to bring our family here and to raise our family. And we have reached that age where we've raised our family and, you know, before this election began, I, I was working, I've been working with citizens who have felt unheard and helping them find answers to make sure that their voices reach the leadership of the city. And I believe that that same commitment deals with public safety and if elected, that's what I plan to do. I plan to continue to help bring people together, both residents, city leaders, or officers, to build stronger communication and to help foster that feeling of community. So that's why I am running.
Thank you. Stephen?
I'm Stephen Wayne Hempel, Senior IT Analyst for, and developer for a company, Fortune 500 company, based in Utah. That's Murray, Utah. Recently, I've been working with AI to make our operations smoother, run faster, and most importantly, less expensive. Through my 25-year career, I have seen technology move so quickly that it'll make your head spin. I have four children, three Eagle Scouts, and an honor student in high school. Harrisville needs someone who will look at our problems, face, will look at the problems facing Harrisville and come up with unique solutions that will make a real impact. We need to review every process, policy, law, and ordinance to ensure that they make sense and support the growth of businesses in Harrisville. I like paying my taxes, but I like paying, I like it when somebody else pays the lion's share. We need to prioritize great locations that include startup incubators and help homegrown businesses thrive and expand in Harrisville. We need to stop pitting neighbors against neighbors, leaving code enforcement up to the city. By leaving code enforcement up to the city, it is unfair when a neighbor dislikes you or has a grudge against you and the city code enforcement, and they complain to the city code enforcement and then harass you. That's why I will support hiring a full-time code enforcement officer who will be solely responsible for making sure all residents of Harrisville are held to the same standards. We need to restore a sense of close-knit community. Somewhere along the way, we lost sight of the activities that once excited us and brought us closer together. I'll support initiatives that will have high impact and low cost to help unite our community. I know we have a lot of questions ahead of us and I hope that by the time at the end of this Q and A, I will have convinced you to vote for me because together we can get Harrisville back on track. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So this first part, our rapid questions. The way this part works is I'm gonna ask you a question. It's just gonna be a yes, no. And at the end of the rapid questions, you'll have two minutes to respond to anything you want on there. So write a note down if there's something you want to go back to, question number. I can read it back to you again if you have that desire. But it's just gonna be yes, no, and because it's just yes, no, we're just gonna go Brenda down to the end each time, okay? All right. Will you pledge to campaign and serve with civility and honesty, avoiding personal or misleading attacks against others?
Yes.
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 Will you commit to meeting regularly with first responders, police, and fire to understand the challenges facing public safety?
Yes.
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 Do you believe in a council member should model lawful behavior and hold themselves to the same standards as residents?
Yes.
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 Will you support maintaining competitive pay and benefits for city employees and first responders?
Yes.
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 Will you commit to working collaboratively with the mayor's office for the good of the city rather than engaging in political division?
Yes.
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 Will you attend a citizens' police academy or participate in ride-alongs to stay connected with public safety operations?
Yes.
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 What question number was that?
Six.
Thank you. Will you pledge to represent your constituents' interests first even when pressured by special interest groups?
Yes.
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 Will you commit to maintaining transparency and accessibility, keeping the public informed of your decisions and reasoning?
Yes.
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 Okay, and Brenda, I'll start with you on the two-minute clarification. Sorry, I'm gonna go with Greg because I started with you last time.
Okay. I think one clarification in the competitive pay is we also have got to realize the unique situation Harrisville has of being a smaller community with limited resources at the present time. So sometimes that competitive pay may be what communities of our size can do versus what are the larger cities doing which have much more capital than we do. So we've got to try to look to make sure we balance that out, be fair and equitable to the employees, but also realize employment, even though it's one of the major portions of the city's budget, there are also other things that have to be taken care of such as sewer water, public places, open spaces. And so it's trying to make a balance between those, realizing the heart of the community is the employees.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes, I actually want to kind of address that same question about competitive pay because I think everybody, no matter what profession they're in, wants to be paid competitively. But with that, one of the issues or concerns, and I think it's a challenge that not only Harrisville has, but many other cities that are cities of our size, is there, there tends to be, and especially as present here in our state, it's almost like a wage battle is taking place in larger police organizations that have more funding behind them, are doing things to pull them away from smaller communities and that's a, that can be a problem because it, it affects in adverse ways communities that are smaller in size such as Harrisville. And so whether that's done collaboratively with the state or with the county or in whatever way that we need to, I think we need to work to address those issues as well to make sure that they are competitively paid, but also that it doesn't make it so that we have to continually raise our salaries to stay in that competitive wage gap area when it's hurting the city and being able to provide other necessary services. You know, and so I think that is a big part of what I want to also make sure happens in regards to law enforcement is help them be competitive, but also address that big issue of that, that wage war that seems to be going on and is prevalent.
Thank you. Stephen?
I have a couple of things. If, if not elected, can we still go to the police academy and, or ride-alongs?
100% on the citizens' academy. It's held and it goes to all the different agencies in Weber County. Ogden is the organizer of it, but it's all the agencies in Weber County.
Okay.
And then ride-alongs, the answer is it's up to your city's agency on what they allow.
Understood. The second thing is, is I think that we should, as it goes with the, the last two questions, we definitely should be investing in our police department. Competitive wages, I work in a very competitive field and if you aren't competitive, you're not gonna have the highest quality individuals working for you. So we really do need to prioritize that. One of the things that I would like to see is Harrisville working with our small city neighbors. Let's get a police force together. Let's utilize this brand-new building that we spent millions of dollars on. And not only let's help pay for that, but let's get other people, other, other cities to help pay for it as well. That's all the clarification.
You?
My comment also is on competitive pay and I totally agree. I've been watching other cities, a city that my business is in is dealing with the same problem of competitive pay. They're, they're getting the police officers and firefighters in, training them, and then they're moving on to other cities that are paying better. So I do feel that we need to work on competitive pay and maybe collaborating with some of our local cities to join forces and maybe we can share some of the costs so that we can pay, have better wages for our police officers and firefighters, first responders.
Thank you. All right, this is gonna be the long-form question. Each of you will have up to two minutes to respond. Take the whole time if you'd like, or less if you feel that you've answered the question. We're gonna start with Greg, sorry, not Greg, Jason on this one. And do you have any questions before we begin this part? Public safety and retention. Harrisville's first responders play a key role in protecting a growing community. How will you work with the city administration to improve retention, maintain morale, ensure competitive pay while balancing fiscal responsibility? So this is a question that you all have kind of addressed. If there's anything additional you'd like to address about improving morale and proving retention, because wages is kind of a little bit of retention, it's a little bit recruiting, but how will you also help retain the employees and keep morale high while balancing the fiscal, which is what you guys were concerned about as well?
So I think we spent a lot talking already about some of the, the compensation part. But I, I think morale is, is huge and I think, you know, anytime that there can be team building and I, and I actually do know that our officers do this and that's something that I will continue to do, is to support any team building, things that they can do outside of work to be able to help support each other because the jobs that our, our first responders have are, are extremely stressful. And there is a growing epidemic of, of mental health issues that, that come into play when you're dealing with high stress. You know, and so making sure that we have support resources available to deal with those, those times that they just need to talk to someone. I think that's a very important thing to make sure happens. And I think our, I think our police chief and lieutenants have done a great job in focusing on that so far and I want to continue to make sure that they're backed.
So I, I absolutely, in addition to what I said in our clarification, I think with more resources by having a larger police department and working with our small city neighbors, we will be able to both retain and provide additional services. I know the state has lots of resources that we can utilize and if we can help support or even take advantage of those, I think that's definitely something we should look into. Thank you.
I love this question because I do, we did talk about retention, but I do believe maintaining morale is huge. Not only with the first responders, in any business, we need to have good morale. Offer trainings, have motivational speakers come in, how to handle stress when certain things are going on in their life. Everybody thinks it's just so easy. They go to work, go home, and then nothing else happens. But I think we need to have those additional trainings and get-togethers and gatherings and, and doing stuff like that would be awesome.
Thank you. Greg?
I think just like the other three have mentioned, retention is important. Harrisville trains people and then to see them leave, sometimes that's a real concern of we're just helping another city with, of the police force that's trained, or we enter in, training them to begin with. Forty-two percent of Harrisville's budget is to, is to the police department. And just recently with the buildings that have been approved, the police department will get additional facilities to meet the, the needs that exist for people who are in, in that service. Because it is a hazardous, risky service that most people just take for granted of those who are police officers. And so we need to make sure that they feel that they're wanted and they know that they, that the committee respects the services they provide. Each of us probably at some point have had a time where we've had to call the police for, for help. And to know that they're there is important and to provide the ability for them to feel that they're safe and that they're appreciated is one of the key things that is needed. That takes place both by, by financial means, but also by other things. Making sure we give them all the things that are needed to make them do their job properly and not cut on some of the safety items that they may need as they go out each day and not knowing what they expect with each call they, they meet.
Thank you. I'm gonna put a one-minute timer on a clarification question. A lot of you mentioned combining resources with other cities. I know that Harrisville does do some cooperative work with the other two north cities in the county. Just clarify what you mean so that, there's been some discussions about a one police department for the north end and there's discussion about just maintaining what you have. So I think it's beneficial if the voting members understand what you mean by, at which direction you're talking about. And we'll start with Stephen.
So specifically, we have this beautiful building. We really have spent a lot of money to make it or will be spending a lot of money to make this, one of the highlights of the city. We can use it. Let's defray some of the costs of it. So how will we work together? Let's get with a small city, our small city neighbors. Let's work with them to see if we can figure out a way to work together without worrying about, or without, without taking away any of our autonomy, without taking away any of the current services or response time, et cetera. So if we can work together, we can help to offset some of the costs, we can retain some of our employees, we can work better and more efficiently. And I think, as we've said on this panel, we will have a better-trained, better, well-equipped force to help us when we need it.
Just to clarify, your own individual agency or a combined to north agency, which direction were you talking about?
Depends on our small city neighbors.
Okay, so it's something you want to discuss and figure out?
We would have to, yes.
Okay. Okay, Brenda?
Okay, I think my experience comes from, and this was many moons ago, many years ago, you guys, I worked for Weber Fire District. It was a great experience in my life. And what's going through my mind is Weber Fire District is all over Weber County. They have six stations. So couldn't we do something like that with the police departments? Similar, that's just kind of what's going through my mind. If, if we were to combine some of the forces, maybe we could do some other things and be able to give better incentives and better pay.
Thank you. Greg?
And I think in my response to that, I am not weighing in one way or another. I think what needs to happen is taking a look at a balance of how do we make a, a police force that we can afford, that can have ability to want to stay in Harrisville because we are competitive, but also at the same time being cost-effective. If it's 42% of our budget now and as things keep going up and up each time, and if we do not increase revenues, what are our other options? Because you don't want to decrease police enforcement and, and presence in the city. But also at the same time, you want to still be able to afford it. And it's combining, that may be one way, but are there other ways too? So I, to your question, I don't know if it is saying a north force because we do have that way with the fire department. They are their own taxing entity, but then that would add a 14th taxing entity to the citizens' property taxes. So it's a balance. I don't know the real answer to that yet.
Thank you.
Now, I did not mention that in my comments, however, I, I, I know we've had discussions or I've had discussions with some of the, some of the officers and I know that our neighboring entities of Pleasant View and North Ogden have already done some discussion work on this and they've actually abandoned that thought and that idea. And there are reasons that our own police force weren't sitting at that table. And I think that we need to be able to understand all those issues. There's many issues when talking about combining police forces. As was mentioned by Greg, how, how is it gonna be funded? What, that's gonna have to be another taxing entity. People are already frustrated that there's so many taxing entities and all of that. But you also have the fact that there's questions, well, who's gonna be in charge? Who do they report to? There's lots of complications and so I think it needs to be explored, but I think it needs to be explored with the support of the police department.
Sounds like a long conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. The next question for, let's see, we did, who did we do last? You did last, so back to you, Brenda. Okay, collaboration, city functionality. The relationship between the city council and mayor's office directly affects how the city, affects how effectively city business gets done. How will you ensure collaboration and professional respect even when you disagree with the mayor or other council members on policy decisions?
How will I handle that?
Yeah.
First off, you have to listen. You have to listen to what the other council members are saying. And yes, maybe I do disagree with it, but like I said foremost, I always listen to all the ideas. I'm going to have my own ideas. And whether, whether we all agree or not, we're going to listen and, and hopefully answer the questions or the problem that we have and move forward with what's best for our community and for our citizens.
I think one of the key things with city council is kind of that last part of the name, council. That means discussing, that means vetting, that means collaboration, that means working through disagreements and coming to the best conclusion for the city as a whole. And while the mayor's office is, is the key in terms of many of the functions of the city, when it comes to policy and decisions on whether it be land development or other things, this mayor is one part of that city council. There's five other individuals too. And trying to work together as a whole group is important. No one always agrees, but if they understand where they're coming from and if they understand what are possible options and this is why the decision is made this way, then I think that helps in communication, both within the council itself and in the community to know how decisions are made. The concern is when there are not reasons, discussions, or knowing other sides have been explored before a decision is made, that leaves, leads to confusion. And I think that's one of the key things that I feel is important in any decision-making, is that understanding what has been discussed, what has been done to try to come to a compromise or an informed consent decision. And I think that's, that's one of the things I, I bring to this position if I'm elected, is that ability to explore further, do the deep dives, and make sure it's all understood as a decision is made.
So this is something that I don't think is new to a lot of us because we all deal with things where you're going to have disagreements. Personally, I am a part-owner in several businesses. And when you're, when you're a part-owner, you're never going to see eye to eye with all the other owners. And so I think taking that same approach that I've taken in business would be the, the approach that, that I would take as a city council member. And I think the biggest thing, as has been mentioned, you're always listening to understand, and then you're communicating why you might disagree. And usually what happens is those disagreements are brought up. New ideas form, solutions are made, and that's the approach. Usually I find either my thoughts align, start to align with what's already been presented, or vice versa. Other thoughts start to come into alignment with what's the right direction, what's the right solution.
In today's politics, it's partisan. We've got Democrats, Republicans, independents. It sows division. Somebody's telling them how they have to think what they think. City council isn't that way. City council is individual ideas, vetted, discussed, talked about, understood, discussed. And it's in the discussion we find consensus. In our consensus, all of us have a differing opinion. I may or may not have a good idea. And in that discussion with the city council members is when we would find whether or not that debate, that's something that I would have thought is a great idea, may or may not be a fantastic idea. So what would I do in the event that I do not agree with other city council members or the mayor? Discuss. Talk about it. Open up the conversation. Listen to the voters. Decide what it is that we have to do in order to make our city the best, most vibrant place. Because the one thing I do know is all of the city council members likely have the city's best interest at heart, including the mayor. Whether or not we agree, that is a completely different story, and it is in the disagreement that we can find a better way to do business. And I think that is the point of a city council and representative government. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this next question's going to start with Greg. This one's on fiscal responsibility and budget priorities. Balancing essential services with financial responsibility is a key challenge for Harrisville. What are your budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year? And how would you ensure city funds are allocated efficiently while supporting critical departments like public safety and public works?
Well, I think one of the key things is have an analysis of where we're at with all the public facilities. For example, utilities, water lines, sewer lines, all those things that people don't see at all, but yet take money if they're not maintained. If we let them run down and just ignore it until it becomes a crisis, that's not good fiscal management. The other part then is balancing those needs and having that information in front of us. So then when there are opportunities for improvements beyond the general maintenance or beyond the personnel, that now we have a strategy of how to move forward and what things that money should go to. I think that is part of that fiscal responsibility, to know where you're at, know the age of your infrastructure, know when demands are needed, budget for it, but also have a plan of improvements made. If a community stays stagnant, it doesn't help. Community has to grow in terms of its revenues, in terms of its vibrancy, and in terms of its people. And that's where I think it's important to then start to balance those outs. Set priority goals based on analysis, needs, and then wants, and then follow spending accordingly.
And I apologize, could I have you repeat the question just one more time?
Fiscal responsibility and budget priorities. Balancing essential services with financial responsibility is a key challenge for Harrisville. What are your budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year? And how would you ensure city funds are allocated efficiently while supporting critical departments like public safety and public works?
Okay, thank you. So I think the biggest thing about my approach to budgeting, and the biggest, probably a policy point, is making sure that we have good discussions about that, about the budget. I know that one of my own personal frustrations that I've had is when we were talking about raising taxes or things like that, I would have questions, well, help me understand what this means in our budget. Help me understand this. And I talked to many of our own city council members, and their answer was, I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is. And so I think having all of us understand fully what the budgeting is is going to be the biggest policy focus, I think, for me, making sure that we can all understand what it's taking to make the city work, that we're going to collaborate together. And then I would love to be able to even see where we foster some of the things that I think some of our neighboring cities have done well, that I think are great ideas. Others may not, but I think it's a great idea to have an independent citizen committee that they don't get to decide on the budget, but just have their input. Because the more input that we can gain, I think the better decisions and policy we'll go forward from that.
We have very similar opinions on this council, which is on this city council candidate meetings, but which is good, because that means that if you pick somebody, chances are you're going to get somebody you like. But here's the cool part. One thing that I think I could say that differentiates me between what I've heard so far is we need to really focus on our income, diversifying our tax base, getting, not depending on our residents' taxes, but let's figure out a way that we can help our small businesses, incubators, maybe small business incubators, or helping the small businesses with some of the startup costs. I'm not saying pay for startup costs, but something that the city can do is help with the licensing fees. Maybe if you promise to be in the city for a little while, that would help. Things like this, where we can help get that income so we can diversify it. That way, when the bill comes due and this infrastructure, things that we need to do, we'll have the income. If you've got a savings, rainy day fund, you've got good income, and something unexpected comes up, you can take care of it. So let's stop relying on, let's prioritize getting rid of our debt, and let's get back to the days when we had a good excess that wasn't dependent on us having debt in order to get the services that we need to take care of for today. So that's what I would do.
Awesome. As a new city council member, I would want to have good discussions from the get-go, right from the start. Tell me where, what we're doing, what are our short-term goals, what are our long-term goals? And then we attend a work session when we go through the budget, and if we don't understand something on that budget, then we ask, especially to the mayor and the people that have been there prior to us. So we just need to learn and listen and just have good discussion and work closely with our city council members and with the mayor. And again, like, understanding the budget and making sure we have a balanced budget, which I'm sure we do.
Thank you. All right. This next question, we're going to start with Jason, and this one is going to be economic and community development. What types of development would you like to prioritize in Harrisville? Business growth, housing, infrastructure, or recreation? And how will you ensure fairness and diversity, and who benefits from these opportunities?
So I think that business development is a focus that a lot of us have talked about, and the importance of business is any time that you have, and not just any business, because not all businesses, by the way, will bring in sales tax, and it's sales tax revenue that we need to offset property tax. So we need to be able to find businesses that will generate sales tax. And so service businesses would not be a great fit if that's the goal. But I think that there are ways that we can look and explore and do that. Just learning from some of our neighbors in Ogden City, my business is in Ogden, and we're two doors away from this amazing collaboration that's going on with Weber State University, and they have an entire floor dedicated to incubator businesses. And, you know, and they don't have a lot of rent or things like that, but it is a good way to have business come in and for new startup ideas to actually take place. And so I think we could find potential ways to explore dedicating a building space, maybe even collaboratively looking at that with one of our neighboring institutions that's, I know, not in our city, but right next to our city with OWATC or things like that, to be able to pull in some of those businesses.
Thank you.
So business growth is, of course, one, and recreation. I think Harrisville, we've lost a little bit of our recreation with the loss of our golf course. Probably wasn't a great moneymaker, but it still was recreation. We've changed that to be housing development, which is fine. It's one of the ways that we can increase our revenue. As I heard the mayor say previously, beds in, cots, cots in, beds in, heads in beds, that's what it was. Thank you. You know, so it's one way that we can increase our revenue, but it shouldn't be the only way. So we need to figure out a way that we can get more businesses and startup businesses, as was said. Income taxes, excuse me, one of the ways that we can do it is by increasing our sales tax, but it's not the only way. If we can get some really good businesses that are going to stay in Harrisville, then we've got a good way for us to increase revenue, increase the amount of money that's coming into the city, and help us with revenue. Those are a few things. Who benefits from that? All of us, we do. Harrisville citizens. If I can offset some of the costs associated with our taxes, that's money that goes directly back into the citizens' pockets. And I know that our aging population is really worried about this. They're worried about being able to be, stay in their homes, being able to continue to afford to live in Harrisville, and I'd like to keep Harrisville affordable. So we've got to come up with unique ways for us to be able to really offset some of those expenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Economic and community development, yes. We do need to, we do need to bring more businesses to Harrisville, but I do also think as a city and the council and planning commission, we need to be careful on what we do bring to the city and make sure we don't lose that small-town, community Harrisville feel. And be careful when we're selecting or discussing it as a council, if this does fit into our business plan. Is this, is this what we want? Is this what we need? Is it going to fit our infrastructure? And be smart about it. Smart growth, and we should be fine.
I think Brenda brings up a good point of looking at cost-benefit of what is brought into the city. Housing in and of itself is a cost drain to the taxes, because it does require more policing, more fire protection, and those type of things. Property taxes in and of themselves account for twenty-six percent of the taxes that are collected by the city. Sales tax is fifty-four percent, and franchise tax is eleven percent. Those top three are where ninety percent of the taxes the city collects come from, sales tax, property tax, franchise tax. And having that right fit of something that is sales tax, that whether it be goods that are provided, or even whether it be getting people in employment that then can draw and create other spin-off activities in that same location within Harrisville, all have cost benefits, and so we need to be wise. But I think it is looking at, we need to focus to try to attract appropriate businesses into the community that will help that need, because property tax on housing does not cover the cost of a city. The more dense housing, the more demand on other services. And so it doesn't, it's something that's needed. You need citizens, but you also need the services that's, the financing of the community is not left to the citizens. In a way, the citizens are the stockholders of Harrisville City, and how the council performs as board of directors depends on the success of that citizen investment in their community, and we just need to be wise in how that's managed.
Thank you. This next question, we're going to start with Stephen. This one's going to be on decision-making under pressure. See, city leaders often face difficult and unpopular decisions, especially when public opinion is divided. How do you approach decision-making in high-pressure situations? And what processes will you use to ensure your choices are fair, informed, and the city's best long-term interests?
It's easy to get heated about a particular topic. We're all human, so what would you do? The first thing I do is I take a step back, and I stop, and I listen. I don't only listen to the people who are in the room. I try to take a step back and listen to all of the people. If it's a particularly big decision that needs to happen, perhaps there's a huge tax rate that we have to increase. Perhaps there's a bond that we want to put out there. I think these, some of these things need to be done in the public forum. We really do need to go out, talk to the citizens, figure out what they feel, and when appropriate, have a vote. Allow you guys, the citizens of the community, to tell us, what does it look like for us? You should be the ones who approve bonds. Allow us to make large increases in taxes. That should be something that is done in public with the consent of those who are going to pay those fees. So that's under pressure. We need to just talk and listen and understand. What tools will I use? Listening. I will listen. Thank you.
I love that, Stephen. Wow, under pressure. I've sold over six hundred families in the last three decades homes, and you want to talk about a lot of pressure. So I feel like I have learned a lot, and I will say listening. Listening and just taking a deep breath, taking a step back. I liked that, Stephen. That's what we have to do. We just can't rush into those decisions. And with these families I've helped over the years, that's what I counsel them when they're purchasing a home. Just take a step back, make sure it's the right decision for you and your family. And I feel like as a Harrisville city council member, the residents are my family. So that's what we will do. We will take a step back, and we will listen and make sure we make the right decisions.
I think rock, papers, and scissors was one of the key elements to make decisions under high pressure. I really think, as the others have mentioned, one of the key things is education, background, and understanding. If those things are all in place, when something may need to be taken into consideration immediately, that background helps in setting the principle of how that decision will go. If that's not there, then the best thing is take time out. I think sometimes we feel pressured to do something because someone wants to have something else happen in a really quick manner, while they then will take time to think and debate whether it's really going to happen or not. We, as we decision-makers, need to make sure we are comfortable with the information first, and if we need to call a timeout, that's what they're there for. We do not have to act immediately unless there's a fire going on in the facility. Other things, we can back off and take the pressure off to have it studied, debated, and then the decision made.
I love this question. Decisions under pressure, there's no better way to describe this than what, I film a lot of live events, just like what we're doing here today, and there's no greater pressure than when the sound fails just two minutes before things are supposed to happen, and you've got to make decisions instantly of how to proceed. But you know, when you think about that, there are very few decisions that should be made under pressure. I think a lot of what happens at a city can happen without as much pressure if two things were to happen. One is that we plan a bit ahead. If a decision has to be made at that very city council meeting, maybe it should have been brought up the city council meeting before with the planning. The other side of that is the citizens need to be, they need to be educated. We need to get the word out. When people have that mounting pressure because they disagree, oftentimes it's because they don't know or they don't understand. And so an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right? So to be able to provide that prevention, that ounce of prevention, I think we need to have regular town hall meetings where one or two city council members, maybe even some of the city representatives, can come, and people can ask their questions ahead of important decisions so that they can get educated. We have been told, if you just attend all the meetings, you'll become educated. I've attended almost, I won't say all the meetings, but I've attended a large number of meetings, and there are still things that I feel like I don't have the answers to. And we need to have ways that people can get the answers.
Thank you. All right, we shared with Stephen last time, so we're back to Brenda. And you have civility, inclusion, and constructive disagreement. So, this may be a little bit built on the last one. Sometimes people take offense at being asked how they differ from other candidates. Why do you believe it's important to understand differences, and how do you ensure respectful disagreements while still addressing community concerns?
Did you catch that?
Would you like me to repeat again?
Yes.
Okay, that's just fine. It's, it's a mouthful. Civility, inclusion, and constructive disagreement. Sometimes people take offense at being asked how they differ from other candidates. Why do you believe it's important to understand differences? And how do you ensure respectful disagreement while still addressing community concerns?
Does it count, this is how I handle my marriage? Constructive disagreements. I hope I'm going to answer this, it was kind of a long question, but I go back to constructive disagreements again. Going to, to the proper, to the proper channels if you're having an issue, or there's something that's just not jiving with the council, or if, if you were on the planning commission and you just go to those steps and talk through it with leadership and hopefully be able to work through those constructive disagreements and make it work, because we all have to work together.
Thank you. Greg?
I think one of the things, when you talk about differences and that type of thing, and disagreements taking place, one of the key things is if you get down to the basis, you'll find there's more common ground than you think. But sometimes you let the, the heat of that individual item take precedence over everything and blind your eye, your, your values or what you're looking at to what is the common base we have, and start to work from there, to then see, okay, where are the differences coming from? And then with those, make a decision. Is this something that is so fundamental that I cannot move away from it? Or is it just pride? And I just don't want to consider anything else? That basis of understanding of where someone come from, what to begin with, not what they're saying, but where are they coming from? What is the real concern? If you can get to that to begin with, generally you can start to work solutions out that may not be so different from what both of you are thinking. And I think that is, is key, that understanding, that basis, and look at that first, because sometimes that's, the real issue is lost because there's the fundamental that is forgotten. And so, you, you swing at gnats when really you all have the same insecticide to take care of the problem.
I love that thought there, Greg's swinging at gnats. I think that a lot of what was said in a previous question is still true here, but I think the most important thing about having respectful disagreements is whenever someone shares their thought or their idea, I think the natural tendency when someone has a disagreement is they want to shout over each other. And so, they, they say what they're saying, and then we say what we're saying, and that, then they go back to what they're saying, and often, just a very simple, let me make sure I understand what you are saying. And then restating what they are saying will often just bring down the temperature about 10, 20, or even 100 degrees, and make it so that the communication can continue onward. And because it's building on those common grounds of understanding that, that discussions and meaningful discussions will take place.
Yell, scream, pound your chest, stomp your feet, and that's exactly how you can not be heard. So, what would I do for civility, first of all? I think it was alluded already, but seek first to understand, and then seek to be understood. That's my mantra. That's the first thing that I would do, is take a step back, really understand what it is that everybody here is, is trying to, to get out. Figure out what it is, as was said, what the underlying, because sometimes the words that they've got don't actually mimic what it is that they're trying to say. So, you really do need to, you really need to stop and understand. Understand what it is that's happening. Take the ego out. Stop thinking that you're the smartest person in the room, and start to listen. And if you're the one who has that big idea that nobody seems to listen to, and you're starting to get frustrated and upset, then perhaps you have not seek, taken your own advice, and that is just to stop, listen, move forward.
Thank you. All right. Looks like this brings us back to the next question. Madam Mayor, it sounds like you might have some reserve officers figuring out how to de-escalate some serious situations here. All right, this one goes to Greg. For community and economic, economic priorities. What type of community development or economic initiatives do you think would best benefit Harrisville, such as more parks, fewer apartments, or increased small business support? And I think a good time to also address, high-density housing tends to be a hot topic button as well to, you might want to address here as well.
Could you just say that one more time?
Yeah, absolutely. Community and economic, economic priorities. What types of community development or economic initiatives do you think would best benefit Harrisville, such as more parks, fewer apartments, or increased small business support? You guys have kind of talked about this a little bit, so just could be a little clarification.
So, I think one of the key things is, as I mentioned earlier, that economic development for small businesses and ways to support them and encourage that to take place in, in Harrisville. I think those things are, are important and beneficial. I think some of the other things, like, like parks, we, we have enough acreage. We just need to be wise on the acreage that we have. We don't need to, again, create more parks and parks because that, again, every time you create a park, you've taken away another source of tax base. And so, it's balancing effectiveness in, in those other items, while at the same time, again, trying to grow the, the revenue through the property taxes, the sales taxes, all the other items. I think everyone has such a strange view of what density is. High density in Harrisville is low density somewhere else. And it needs a clarification of what do we mean by those terms? And how do we blend together the ability for people and residents? They can stay in Harrisville. They start off, then they can expand as their income increases. And then they can, they can meet the changing demands of a market because their house now becomes that valuable asset they have to meet those demands. If we go too far and just build a one-type scenario, it doesn't give a family a chance to expand and stay in place. They move out. That's kind of been the, the past of Harrisville. We move out, move out to somewhere else, and so some of the, the mainstay are left, and those who come in are there for a bit and then move off again because they don't have a place to expand and with a growing family. So, those are some of the challenges faced there. So, I think, again, the first is the economic development, to be able to start to stabilize things that we have not been able to take care of at the present time.
I think those are some great ideas, Greg. One of the things that I think about as far as economic initiatives, I, I think that there's a lot that can be done in our own, it doesn't have to all be solved by government. In fact, if we're looking to government to solve all issues, we're probably looking in the wrong places. I, I belong to an organization that is a tri-city organization, that is the Northview Business Alliance. And the Northview Business Alliance is an organization that is, its intent is to grow things in our tri-city area economically, working with government, working with small businesses, working with all the people that we can to make things grow. And so, I think it's having those public partner, or excuse me, public and private relationships and, and building on those, because there are people that are movers and shakers in our communities, especially in business worlds. And those movers and shakers in the community can do so much more than any of us could do in public office to help facilitate and bring in, in private business. Talking about the, the density, I think that there are solutions that, again, private industries are, are working and collaborating with government organizations to come up with ways that we can help address density issues within our cities. There's a beautiful Nielsen Homes development that's in Far West that I think is a great example of some of those things. And if you haven't checked that out, it might be a good thing to go check out, just to name a few.
Thank you.
In addition to the small, increasing the small business initiatives that we've, that I've already discussed, I'll leave that on the table, you can review it in the, in the previous comments. I think to get additional heads and beds, we should increase, well, we've got, we've got a lot of homeownership, but we need to increase it and have affordable homeowners. We also should allow people who are already homeowners to offset some of that income or some of that expense by allowing ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. If we allow, if we allow people to put a small apartment in the backyard or above the garage or detach something, and then we allow people to rent, not only do we get to increase our beds and heads, we can attract additional businesses that'll come to Harrisville, and will allow us to really increase what is happening within Harrisville. So, I think those are a couple of things. Open spaces, we've got, we really should allow the use of open spaces. We've got places within our city that are maybe a private place that perhaps could be opened up and allow public people into. For example, I've got five and a half acres in Harrisville, and, you know, I use it to grow hay, but there could be a portion that, maybe I have a small lake in the backyard that would allow people to come and fish. I don't, I don't currently, perhaps that's something that would be nice. And perhaps that's something that could be done as a private-public partnership. So, things that are outside of the boxes that, that would help us to increase what it is that the city offers without increasing expenses.
Thank you.
I do love the fact that we've all talked about supporting small businesses. I think we're all on the same page for that. Again, smart, sensible support for the small businesses. I find it interesting that a lot of our surrounding cities are building a lot of apartments because the state came down and said, we need affordable housing. Unfortunately, I don't think apartments are the answer. I feel like affordable housing needs to come in a different way. We need to find a way for first-time homebuyers to purchase homes in Harrisville, existing homes. We don't need all these new townhomes and apartments built because we need more housing. We need more affordable housing, and I'd like to really hone in on that and find a way that we can get these first-time homebuyers into our city and stay for a little while where they can afford it. I also agree with Stephen, I love the, the aspects of the ADUs. I love the detached and the attached ADUs, and I believe a lot of the cities are starting to do that, so, and I am seeing a lot of that. And we also need to be smart when we do that because we don't want to trash up the neighborhoods by letting them just put whatever they want in there. They, you know, we need to be responsible and, and, and do that the right way as well.
Thank you. All right, so this one's going to be, next one's going to go to Jason, and it's on the topic of differentiation of leadership and vision. And I, I think it's a, a good comment to make, that Stephen echoed what he said earlier, which was, it sounds like you all are pretty similar in, in your positions, which is good because that means the city's going to get, it sounds like, something they want regardless of who they get. This question's going to be more about, what are the finite things that really set you guys apart? They have to choose, they have to choose what the difference is besides just knowing someone better. There's a lot of citizens in the city, and how are we going to separate them out? So, what do you believe sets you apart from the other candidates in terms of leadership, experience, and your vision for Harrisville's future? Go ahead.
So, I think one of the biggest things that separates me in, in terms of that is the relationships that I already have with other leaders in the communities that surround us, as well as in our, our county and public legislature. I think that that's a huge thing. I, up to this point, I had been serving as the, the vice chair of the Weber County Republican Party, and in that, I had many opportunities to sit down and serve with all of the servant leaders that are representing us, both on the local levels as well as on the national levels. And, and many of them, I, I go together and have lunch with and, and collaborate with on a regular basis. And so, sometimes when we have problems that approach the city, it's actually not something that we can solve. We actually need the help of our, we need the help of our county leaders, or we need the help of our state leaders. And these are people that I have regular discussions with. And because I have those regular discussions with them, I think that puts me in a perspective in that position to be able to help take Harrisville to that next level and, and help get those problems solved that, that do face our community that need that extra help.
I have a, I've been working in IT for 25 years, and the hot topic right now is AI, artificial intelligence. Cities need to build efficiencies into their processes. We need to leverage the use of technology today more than we have ever in the past. That's one thing that is very unique about me, is that I've been working with AI for, since it's come out in the last couple of years, and, and I have been working in the infrastructure technology, IT field for 25 years. I have a vast set of skills that I can use to help guide the, the city and find efficiencies in order to help reduce costs and improve services for the city. So, that's one thing that I believe that is not available through any of these other candidates. And so, hopefully you can see the value in that and elect me as your city council member.
Thank you.
I would say my greatest strength is connection. Being a real estate broker for over three decades, I've learned how to listen and connect and bring people together and find real solutions. I'm also, being a real estate broker and having a business, I have 25 agents that work for me. So, the experience of management and training and, and understanding and, and helping people through hard times, I feel like is one of my strengths, and I hope to bring that to the city. And my knowledge of the previous planning commission and all the stuff that falls under, all, all, and, all is under the land. I didn't even say that right. I'll figure it out. I'll fix it in the next question.
Thank you.
I'd probably answer this with a professor that came to our university that I was studying at, and he was a professor from University of Pennsylvania, and he charged the students to take the skills that they had learned in, in the discipline I was studying, which was landscape architecture, and infiltrate all areas of, of life with that because, as he said, you were trained in, in the way to see, putting people and land and bringing things together and analyze and critically think in a way that'll benefit both the person, the community, and the planet. And that has always been something that has driven me in looking at ways to take those talents and skills, and whether it be in design, or whether it be the service I rendered as a, a public servant, and knowing that most people looked at public servants as you couldn't find a job in the real world, so that's why you're on the dole with the public. Or whether you know the satisfaction that takes place because you've been a part of something, to see it grow and develop, and others enjoy it. And also learning from those things that have not succeeded, and learn from those things that have not happened to how you thought it'd be, and say, okay, I've learned that lesson, let's avoid that. I think that knowledge and those capabilities that I've developed over the last, I almost want to say 50 years now, that really gets me old. I think those are some unique things that I have that can be a benefit. And I think the important part of this, as you've maybe listened to us all, we all have some basic principles that are all the same. We all want to see the same things happen in Harrisville. We all want to see the same things happen in Harrisville. But that would be the one thing that maybe sets me apart, is the experiences, the understanding both from being a public servant and how they view things.
Okay, I think that brings us to the open mic moment. Is there anyone who wants to ask any questions? No? All right. Saved ourselves eight minutes. We're going to go into closing statements. This is going to go to Stephen. It's your turn to start off. So this is a two-minute closer, why you're the best candidate and why they should choose you.
Thank you for your time today. It has been enlightening and I appreciate the questions. We have bright people in this room and online. And Harrisville and its citizens have a bright future ahead of us. Harrisville has millions in debt we didn't have four years ago. There is nothing we can do about that. The money has already been allocated and spent. But all hope is not lost. We can find creative solutions such as merging our police force with small city neighbors. Done right, it would make our public safety building the hub of a multi-city collaborative effort, helping us offset the expenses of our bonds. This will ensure Harrisville remains vibrant and viable into the future. Visit my website at hempel, the number four, harrisville.com for more information about me and my ideas. On every one of my flyers, I put my cell phone number because I genuinely want to hear from you. So on November 4th or the 15th in a couple of days, when you get your ballots, vote for me, Stephen Wayne Hempel. And together, let's get Harrisville back on track.
Harrisville is more than where I live, it's home. For 27 years, I've helped several families plant their roots here, build their dreams, and find a place where they truly belong. That's why I'm running, to protect what makes our community special while planning wisely for our future. I bring real experience in housing, planning, and small business. But more importantly, I bring heart. I believe leadership means listening, serving, and doing what's right, even when it's not easy. I love this community and I'll work every day to make sure Harrisville continues to be the kind of place we're all proud to call home.
Well, I made the comment about swatting at gnats. And that came from experience as a teenager, cutting asparagus every day in the sun in the spring. If you cut asparagus in the morning, there were no gnats. If you cut it in the evening, you're always jabbing yourself with the asparagus knife, trying to get the gnats away. And it's simply just saying, okay, what is working best? What are some of the things that you don't have to swat at gnats? It's timing, it's understanding, and then it's working with those factors. And I think that's why I decided to run for city council, is good ideas will always prevail. They may not be implemented right in time, but I've had the patience over years to see good ideas kind of steam and brew and then finally take place. If we can provide good ideas for the community as goals and can work towards those and not feel that everything has to happen at one point, but be patient with that, but set up the framework and set up the ability to have that happen, I think I could have, would have accomplished my goal. And I think that's one thing I bring to this office is the ability to do that because of experiences, because of dealing with people for many, many years and understanding the concerns by meeting with them and seeing the other point of view before acting on something. So I think that's one of the things I feel important. That's why I decided to run for council office.
Thank you.
So I want to just summarize the last thing. I know that there are many people who are watching this that have already made up their mind. And there are probably those who are still trying to make up their mind. And those are the people I want to just appeal to for just a moment. You know, my commitment's very simple. It's always been and will always be to you, to the citizen. I will work to represent you. I will work to represent and be your voice, not my own voice. I want to make sure that you know that I will listen directly to what you have to say. I understand the feelings and the concerns on levels that you may not think that I fully understand. You know, one of the things that is interesting is that people talk about, that are older, that they live on a fixed income. Well, my family and I, we've been on a fairly fixed income for most of our time living in Harrisville. So I understand the pressures that mount when it is about having a fixed income. We need to be able to have thoughts that will help heal divides that have happened in our city. That was brought up at our last debate, was that there's feelings that there are divisions. And I think that the biggest reason that divisions are there is because we don't have the same mindset or understanding of things. And that's what I want to help do, is to help be that bridge that can heal divisions and help move Harrisville over. So if you're one of those people who are still trying to decide, I just have one thing to say. This election is about change. It's about stepping up. It's about getting our city back on track and about shaping a promising future for every Harrisville resident. And that's why I would ask for your vote, Jason Hadley, for Harrisville City Council.
Thank you. Well, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for coming out and participating in this debate. It does help get the information out. That's all our whole effort here. And we hope you share this with your constituents so that they may be able to consider the best candidate for them. I know that running for any campaign, regardless of how small or big, is an effort. It requires sacrifice, a lot of stress and a lot of headaches and a lot of repeated questions and sitting in front of people, answering questions, the same questions in different ways. So I appreciate the sacrifices you guys have gone through there. But I'd like to really hit on is the civility. Not every city gets to see civil people running against each other, trying to just find the best representative. There can be times we run into people who are just trying to get power. And those people are bad options. And that's what we hope to really pull out of these debates, is recognizing those types of people. And we definitely don't have, it appears to me, to have any issues with that here in this race here. So I just want to thank you for the work that you guys are doing and that the example you're setting to other races around you. So thank you again and have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.